Okay, um, everyone, we do have a quorum. So I will call the meeting to order of the Planning Board, uh, meeting of November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at four ten P M. I'd like a roll call vote, please, as we're virtual only.
Carol Hofstis present.
Lance McNally present.
And Laura Schiffern present. We have, um, guests with us this evening, Joseph Boyle and Adam Costa, along with our administrator Beth. And I would like to say the pledge of allegiance before we start, if you'll join me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I still want to thank our veterans and military who are currently serving, as well as all of our emergency response people. Uh, one point re, the meeting is being recorded and will be, uh, appearing on the Townsend YouTube YouTube channel. Um, right now, let me just see what you put on here. The correspondence is there. So I don't have any additions or deletions. Uh, Beth, right? Okay, basically, we're just in work session this evening. Two point one Planning Board Discussion, twenty twenty five Fall Meeting Warrant. Okay, so the purpose of this work session was to see if we could get some, uh, changes, edits to our bylaws that make sense and that would allow us to have a public hearing. Am I giving feedback? Yeah, okay, okay, Robert, Robert is Robert. Can you announce yourself, Robert? Robert, can you unmute to announce yourself? I don't know if he's having difficulty. He looks like he may not be hearing us yet.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Okay, um, as I was saying, with the Fall Town Meeting and at our last meeting, we discussed uh, making some bylaw changes and perhaps having a public hearing. Um, I think, Beth, December thirteenth? Think we were looking at? Okay. And so our suggestions would be, um, made before then, uh, have the public hearing and then, uh, December eighteenth, I believe, is the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Uh, excuse me, it's the seventeenth and they're closing the warrant on the eighteenth.
Okay.
So we have a schedule that we, um, could possibly adhere to. Oh, I was probably, well, I'm sorry, I will put myself on camera, but I really didn't want to today. See everybody else's, so I will join you this way. Okay, so, um, where shall we begin, I guess, would be?
Accessory use.
Accessory use, well, um, Jo, why don't we, um, Beth, you had, uh, Mr. Boyle come? And
Yes.
Why don't we have him speak first? So we get that one out of the way. He doesn't have to be with us the whole time.
Um, I'm afraid I might have to be with you for a while because there's a couple of questions here. So, um, all right, the accessories, uh, accessory dwelling units. Um, I, what I, what I have now and what we have sent into the uh, MBTA office for their review and are waiting for their reply is our our, um, zoning amendments and proposed map. Among those zoning amendments was is the creation of a site plan approval um, chapter, section, which is actually true site plan approval. Um, not your site plan review, um, special permit and the it and there's, uh, references in it and in the multifamily overlay district, uh, zoning, saying that site plan, uh, projects requiring site plan approval go through this new site plan approval and not through the old, um, site plan review special permit. Now, in terms of ADUs, it would be, first of all, that, uh, that the language creating this new, uh, site plan approval section, uh, I could pull that out of the MBTA bylaw and it make it a standalone site plan approval section, um, and put references in it uh, that site plan review under, uh, for, uh, by right accessory dwelling units uses this section rather than site plan review special permit. So especially as by right ADUs in compliance with the new law would be the hook for passing this, uh, um, ordinary site plan approval section. Okay, and, uh, where we'd be adding that to the, uh, uh, to the zoning. Uh, just with the, and I would likewise, I could likewise go back to the, uh, to the to the accessory dwelling unit section and, uh, make reference to the, uh, approval process going through your existing ADU section and change the references so that the approval goes through the, uh, this new site plan approval. And then what we'd have is ADU language, which takes your site plan, which takes your review of ADUs out of special permit and makes them uh, subject to just site plan approval, which isn't a special permit, which is lawful under the new law. And basically, you would have in place this site plan review system when February first, uh, comes around and, um, accessory dwelling units become legal in your town.
Right, so I, all we need is a general bylaw in the zoning uh, for accessory use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and subject, it's gonna be by right anyway, so um, it's just gonna be subject to a site plan review, period, not a special permit.
Yes. Ye, uh, yes, that, that's the plan, that would be subject to site plan approval. You'd have a new site plan approval. And, all right, and if you remember, I've tried to be careful about this and somebody caught me last time. We're using site plan approval to refer to the new by right legal, um, variety of site plan review that's not a special permit and site plan review to refer to what you already have in your zoning, where you define site plan as a special permit. So, yes, that's right, um. It, we'd have a new site plan approval, um, section to, uh, propose to put in the law and we'd have, as well as language in the it, in your ADU section, which points to that instead of pointing to the site plan review special permit. That way you'd, we'd get the, uh, we, you'd come into compliance with the law in terms of, uh, well, still preserving the board's ability to review what it wants to review and that site plan approval would then be sitting there in the zoning, uh, ready for the MBTA Communities Act to refer to it.
Right, so generally, all what we have to do is, as a town, say accessory dwelling units are allowed by right, period.
Yep.
No special permits required.
Yep.
Only subject to site plan review.
Approval, yes. Yes, and then, uh, site plan approval in this section, and then you go to this section and there'll be a whole, a whole little section there and it will also make reference to the ADUs. Then, when we come back and do the MBTA law, we'll add a little more language in there about, uh, that the, both, uh, resident, by right residential development in the MF, in the multifamily overlay district refers to this section too. And then site plan approval would be referring, would apply to your, which is basically how it is written now. I've written it now as to be something that the multifamily overlay district can refer to with the understanding that we'd go back and amend it so that the ADUs refer to it. Now, because this meeting is popping up, um, I'm just gonna switch that. It'll start off as something that the ADU section refers to and then the MBTA Communities Act will come in and that will also refer to it.
Right, so right now, the new bylaw will be by right.
Yes.
And then, when we do the MDA, um, MTA district.
Yep.
Um, everybody's subject to the same bylaw.
Yep.
Anyway, so
Yes.
I don't know if we have to even make a special focus on it.
Well,
MBTA district.
Well, uh, I'm sorry, what's the question?
I don't know if we have to, if it's in the general bylaw anyway, it's a zoning by right.
Yep.
And no special permits required.
Yep.
Then I don't know when we do the MBTA district that we even have to refer to at all because it's subject to the same general zoning requirement.
Um, well, the only thing is, if we haven't cleaned up your bylaw, uh, the site plan review special permit sections of your bylaw and pass the MBTA, then, uh, if the MB, uh, if the new MBTA stuff doesn't refer to it, then your old site plan review special permit language will capture MBTA projects in the MBTA overlay district and suddenly they're by special permit and you're no longer lawful.
Well, that's what we want to do now, prior to the MBTA.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, exactly right.
We have that already in the ordinance. Um, then we don't even have to even address it in the MBTA district.
It's already, meaning because it's already in the MBTA ordinance?
Have to fix it now.
Yes, yes.
We're gonna be doing that now.
Yes.
Prior to the MBTA uh, district.
Yeah, um, although I wanted to bring that up and ask you if you think we should try to push to get, uh, MBTA onto this January town meeting. Let's say the MBTA Communities Office got back to me tomorrow and said, you're good to go.
I don't think we should. I, I don't think we should. We need some public hearings on this.
Mm-hmm.
We have to educate the public. Um, and we have to show, the zoning board has to show what, how we arrived, what we did and why we're making the recommendation or not, and that's, uh.
Okay, Robert, thank you. Um, does any other board member have any comments before I ask Adam? Okay, and so just to reiterate, we have until our, the next meeting, which is the thirteenth, to have public hearings. And at that point in time, we can make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, who will meet on the seventeenth to close the warrant by the eighteenth. So we are having public hearings on the thirteenth of December.
Yeah.
Um, no, I have, yeah, go ahead.
Isn't that what we said, Beth?
Well, so the board is meeting next on the ninth, so, um, and let me get the dates up again.
Okay, we're meeting on the ninth, but we could have a public hearing on the thirteenth.
Yes, so the thirteenth would be January thirteenth. If you decide to bring forward any warrant articles, you know, they can go on to the warrant, but then you can have your public hearing a little later to give you time to polish them.
Okay, all right, I, I do think that I remembered that. And yes, that will give us time to have the public hearing after and before we had the Fall Town Meeting, which is January twenty fifth, right?
And could I ask a, a procedural question? Um, if we were to go forward, MBTA communities, would the butters or landowners in the selected MBTA overlay district need to be notified? That's just a procedural question.
Yes, they would. Um,
I'll need time.
Adam can answer that better than me.
I'll need time for that.
They're, they're, they're not, they're not
Pardon me?
They are not required to be notified.
They're not.
Okay, that's, that's good. That means I
Not by statute. Some, some communities choose to notify them, which you have the ability to do, but statute doesn't require it.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and Townsend zoning doesn't, doesn't require it?
I don't think Townsend zoning says anything about a rezoning, no.
No, okay, okay, uh, we, uh, we just did this in Lemonster and they do have to notify every, every owner and every butter within three hundred feet of anywhere where zoning changes are being made.
Well.
The mailing was sixty-six hundred bucks.
Yeah. Oh, gosh.
Wow. I don't, I don't know that we're, we would have that many people.
Right, right.
Notifying in that area, but, um, wow, okay.
All right, it's, I'm, so it's sounding to me like the time constraints are really kind of limiting the ambition of this. Um, what I can definitely have ready and get in is the new, is a new site plan approval section with language that, uh, um, ADU, by right ADUs, uh, apply to this and a, um, and some, um, amendments in the ADU section saying, use the site plan approval, not site, not, uh, site plan review special permit section. Um, I don't think we need a substantive conversation here, though, about the level of review that the board wants. Um, do you really want to do a site plan review for every single ADU? Would you want to do a site plan review for an ADU that is entirely contained within an existing single family home? Um, so, some communities, um, site plan, have site plan review for some ADU projects and not others. Some of them have site plan review projects for new construction, um, but not for, if it's entirely within an existing building. Some of them have, uh, a site plan review for a detached ADU, but not an attached ADU, so if it's a separate building versus whether it's in the house versus whether it's an addition. So, uh, I'm gonna, um, talk about, I think there are four different scenarios here to think about. First of all, an ADU in an existing single family home, entirely within the existing single, single family home. The case of somebody turns their basement into an apartment. If there aren't any, um, if, uh, if there isn't anything being, uh, uh, actually new construction, new footprint, do you still want an, a, uh, site plan i- uh, to come before you?
I think you have to. And the reason I think you have to is we have to verify the maximum square footage allowed.
So they're still gonna be applying for a building permit and your building commissioner is your zoning enforcement officer. Every other project looks at an application and checks to make sure whether it meets all of the black and white numerical requirements and stuff zoning.
Yeah, we, I don't think we need it then, yeah.
I, I agree. Well, I don't think we need it.
I agree. Are you three saying that entire, just about the ADUs entirely within a single family home?
Yes.
Within.
Within, okay. So within, uh, SFH, no SPA.
Beth, I'd like to have the record show that Andrew has joined us.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, Robert.
How does that apply to a duplex?
Uh, okay, a duplex. Okay, uh, so, uh, first of all, um, uh, duplex, whether it, the units are rented or whether they are owned as condos are the same thing under the zoning. The zoning does not distinguish between ownership versus rental in, uh, defining a land use. It's actually illegal to do that. Um, the difference between a single family home and a duplex is that a single family, is that a two-family home contains two family units, two units designed for occupation by a family. You're never gonna find a building that was built to contain two efficiency units and that's it. Nobody would ever build that. They build two family units with, uh, um, two units designed for family occupation. A single family home with an A, with an accessory dwelling unit contains one family unit that's designed for family occupation and then one accessory unit that's not really a family unit. This is where the cap on square footage and the cap on bedrooms come in. You can have a smaller unit, which isn't, you know, it's more for an individual or a young couple. Um, and that's the difference and they're defined separately in your, in your bylaw.
So my question is, if you have a two-family.
Like an existing two-family home?
Right.
Okay.
And will they have the right to add an accessory unit to one or both of them?
No. Not, not unless you, uh, but Townsend could, could adopt a bylaw that allows a owner of a two-family to, uh, add an accessory unit if you wanted. That would be a little weird, but you could. Um, probably be a lot easier just to adopt a multifamily housing bylaw. But, um, what's required of the towns under this law is to allow single family homes to allow, to, uh, add an accessory unit. If the law specifies that, in its definition of what an ADU is, that it's, um, a single, that it's, goes with a single family home. So you have to have a single family as your primary use in order to have an ADU. You can't have a two-family or a multi.
I just wanted to cover that subject here.
Yep. Now, let's say somebody in town did have a, uh, a, uh, two-family, which is existing as a pre-existing non-conforming use. Uh, does that become legal if it, uh, with this new ADU bylaw being counted as a single family with an accessory unit? Probably not. Because once again, your, uh, your pre-existing non-conforming two-family probably has more than two bedrooms and/or more than nine hundred square feet. And remember, the definition of what has to be allowed and what, what an ADU is under, uh, this new ADU law limits them to, uh, two bedrooms and nine hundred square feet. It, it really is, i- it really was written at the state level, not to be a law that authorizes two families. It's a law that authorizes ADUs, which is a different thing. Um, if I, uh, could go on, the scenarios I wanted to ask your opinion on. An ADU built entirely within a single family home. Second one is an ADU which involves building an addition onto an existing single family home. Is that a situation that would require site plan review?
Yes.
Addition to SFH, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the consensus of the board? Okay, yes, okay. Um, number three is a freestanding detached accessory dwelling unit in an existing building. So let's say somebody has a barn and they, uh, or a detached garage and, uh, they use, turn the attic space above it into a unit. They're not adding any more footprint onto the ground. Is that a situation where you want, uh, site plan review?
I don't.
I would say no.
What is, about the board?
Okay, we've got, Carol? Can't hear you.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so that one's a no, within existing accessory building. And, uh, is a no, and I, I'm, I'm going to guess here that if somebody builds one in a new detached building, you are going to want site plan review for that.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so. All right, um.
Anything within the existing footprint is allowed without a review.
Exactly, and that will refer to the existing footprint of both the primary structure and accessory buildings, if they want to convert the shed or the garage or something. Excellent, okay, that was efficient. All right, um, so all right, so this is really about creating a site plan approval section, which is about ADUs and, all right. And in order to do this, I'm going to have to make some changes to the existing site plan review special permit section. Um, saying basically ADUs, this doesn't apply to ADUs, look in the section, such and such, um. I will, as I get into that, um, do what I can, uh, get, I'm, I'm gonna try to do as much of the easy work of the site plan review um, project, you know, the one we're waiting for on the PAC grant. I'll see if I can, how much of that I can get done as part of this, but what's my deadline to get you a document?
Uh, what do we have?
It's, um, let's see, December.
I think I gave you a
December thirteenth, your head is gonna be your public hearing.
Yeah, so that's the thirteenth, it'll be the, the warrant closes.
January thirteenth.
Yeah, January thirteenth, sorry, um, the warrant closes on December eighteenth.
Well, yeah, but it'll be the, the night of the seventeenth is when
Officially, yeah, so.
Yeah, have to be into the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, so the board, um, could you, you know, let's see, what is the eighteenth?
Wednesday.
I thought you said you were holding a public hearing, um, December thirteenth.
No, January, uh, and that's, and that's just an arbitrary date I put out there because, um, that is a planning board meeting and it's the last planning board meeting before the Fall Town Meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's flexible, the board can move that around and, uh,
Okay.
Do it earlier, but.
The scheduling isn't as tight as I thought then. Okay, good.
Yeah, January thirteenth, I think, yeah, mm-hmm.
We just need to have some sort of, uh, verbiage or intent to hold, uh, like a placard on the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting.
Okay.
We need that before the seventeenth. We should vote on it at the ninth, actually, that doesn't do.
And unfortunately, folks, I have some bad news. December ninth is the big Lemonster joint, um, public hearing between of their Planning Board and their city council on their MBTA Communities Ordinance, so I'm booked.
Well, I don't know if we need you to be with us. We're discussing tonight what it is, what we need, and if you could just get that to us and we'll review that.
Yeah, I, I can, I can get that to you, uh, you review that and send me your comments from that meeting and then I will work them into the bylaw and get it back to Beth in time to send to the Planning Board for their, uh, for their December, it went eighteenth when the warrant closes?
Yeah, so it'd have to be back by, you know, the sixteenth, preferably.
Okay.
You know, if, anytime before that, you know, like.
By sixteenth, so I'll get the first draft to you. Draft, uh, let's see, you're meeting on the ninth, so I get that to you, um, I'm, I'll, I'll get that to you Friday. This Friday.
Okay, great, great. Great.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, saving up my, I'm the newbie, so I'm saving up my vacation hours, so I'm not taking that Friday.
Okay. So can I ask a question, um, Adam Chair, regarding? Yes, so are you going to also have to make amendments to the accessory apartment bylaw? Because that is currently, it, it's currently been, um, an amendment that was passed at the last town meeting that's still with the AG in review. Um, so we're kind of, that's, that's going on and in process and, uh, so they had a ninety-day extension on their review, but those edits and those amendments were, ah, shall we say, they were, I guess they were fairly substantive, so, but that's sitting out there. I don't know if you can still amend a bylaw that is under an AG review, I guess, I would ask town council if I may. Is that allowable?
Adam? We can't for you.
If I formed that question well.
Adam.
No, that, that's fine, uh, through you, Madam Chair. So the Attorney General approved the bylaw last week.
Oh.
Oh, goodness, okay, okay, great, thank you, thank you.
But to that question, do you know if, like, can we amend something that's, that hasn't been approved by the Attorney General?
So you have the ability to do that, but you do it at risk that the Attorney General is not going to approve the base document and therefore whatever you approve by way of amendment doesn't, doesn't really jive with what town meeting adopted previously. So I, I typically advise against it, but there are some circumstances. what town meeting adopted previously. So I, I typically advise against it, but there are some circumstances where for one reason or another, towns have chosen to, to proceed with an amendment, even while awaiting Attorney General approval of something recently adopted.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that.
So Adam, do we, do we need to set up a collection to get you some books for your bookcases?
Stop it.
It's a, it's a fake background, Lance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, that's a really super office you got there.
That was clean. Okay. So anything else that you need from us, Joe?
Well, this question that you raised about amending the ADU bylaw, remember, I'm going to be doing that for you. I, I need the new ADU bylaw that just got approved because I'm going to be making changes to that to make references to this site plan approval section.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
So that it goes, I'm going to make it also, I'm going to make it, I'll go through that. I'll make the ADUs that require this go through. Okay, that's what I'll do.
And I'll make sure I send that to you.
Thank you. Um, and we are not doing the MBTA Communities Act. And we are. Yeah. And we are still waiting on site plan review special permit for that PAG. All right. Sounds like I have till Friday to do it. This is actually the timeframe that I had recommended before we give, that we wait this long to see if the Commonwealth comes out with any guidance and regulations about ADUs, the way that they gave themselves the power to. I haven't seen any, Adam, have you?
Seen any what?
Uh, with the EO HLC in the, in the housing bond bill, in the ADU language, said they reserved for themselves the rights to issue guidance and regulation. Have you seen any guidance and regulation?
No, they're working on draft regulations, but they've said they won't be issued until sometime in the late fall or early winter.
Yeah. Of next year?
No, this year.
Oh, of, of, oh, all right.
Sometime, sometime in the next three months, I think, would be late fall, early winter. Fall ends on December 20th, winter starts. So I'd be surprised if we get something before the holidays, but that's the, the EO HLC issued a, or, or, or gave a webinar presentation. I think it was about three weeks ago now. And as part of their presentation, which is now posted on their website, they indicated that they, they were working on draft regulations, which would be issued in the coming months.
Okay. Okay. So based on that, it looks like we're still in a holding mode on me draw, drawing you up a new ADU bylaw. So I will just do what has to be done to the ADU bylaw to create this site plan approval section. And, you know, keep in mind, we're going to be going back to it.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think that's all I have to do stuff.
Thank you so much.
Does the board have any questions for Joe before he leaves? Any board member?
No, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, thanks, everybody. I wanted to let you, I wanted to let you know that the the MBDA Communities Office actually really thinks that they really like the way we're doing the site plan, the, the oversized district with the cap in order to allow for a little more flexibility. And they like the second ramp in order to also provide a little more flexibility. So I'm, I hope that you're all okay, that I'm going to be using that basic model in my work with Ashby and Westminster to create their bylaws too. And I'm, I'm sharing the language and everything with them because they really like what we've done.
Well, that's a part of the goal of MRPC anyway. Is to be sharing with each community so that everyone benefits from the work that gets done. So, thank you very much.
Yep. One, and one last piece of information, we got feedback on a couple of proposed MBTA bylaws and that MRPC produced. And they, they approved all of our language in, and all, and our maps and everything for Lemonster and also I think it was, I think it was Harvard, no Sterling. But they said that the existing zoning bylaws had problems which would keep you, keep the town to being in compliance. One of them was a definition of family. Definition of family where you put a cap on the number of unrelated people that can live together. They're not, they don't like that. We're gonna, I think we're gonna, if, if you have your definition of family includes a cap like that, I think we're going to have to take the number off and just have it read or a number of unrelated people living together in a housing unit. They don't seem to like there being a number at all.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I didn't think we could do that.
I, it's legally dodgy anyway. It would be best to do that anyway. You're right.
And A-Adam, your thoughts on that?
That's correct. We, we've been advising against that for many years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, housing wise, I know that from just doing business. But, okay, well, thank you.
And in terms of protecting the public welfare, if you lose that regulation, the rules about overcrowding units and number of people and everything, they exist in the building code, they exist in the fire code, and they exist in the septic code. So your, your building commissioner is still going to be able to take enforcement action in those situations. It's just, just not under this. The other, and now the other piece of advice that we've gotten is to make sure that your site plan approval is, it's not discretionary. And that it, it, it has clear standards for approval and it isn't being too discretionary. So we're already taking care of that one with what I'm doing right now. So just want, so that is the last bit of information I have for you. Thank you for having me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, did you have a question?
No, I did not. I thought Joe was transitioning off, so I was waving. Goodbye.
Bye, everyone.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your attendance. Okay. Next. Did you share with, now, I know that you gave us the 145-48 session inclusionary housing requirements. And it was like, I did get to print that off and the changes, but this document was actually approved in 1989?
Oh, so that, what I put in there was received from the Housing Authority, or I'm sorry, the Townsend. It was, it was, oh, it was transferred from the Affordable Housing Trust. The, they have approved this. I can screen share it. They've approved a amendment to, yeah, section 14548, which was the Affordable Housing Conditional Density Bonus. And let me put that up so everybody can know what we're talking about. And they wanted to bring it to the planning board. So I put it in your folders. We haven't had a chance to discuss it or review it. But given, given that it came into the board, I wanted to share it with everybody. And see if you want to discuss it. All right.
So this part came, you put in because of the explanation also that was sent to the board from the Housing Trust? Yeah, that's the document that you had in there.
No, this is, this is unrelated. This was something that they have been, it's kind of been one of those documents or one of those bylaws that really hasn't been very effective. I don't think it's ever really been used. So it came up in one of the, I think it came up in one of the age-restricted development reviews that was under review at the planning board. And the the Housing Trust, I believe it was, or the Housing Authority, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure which one it was, went through it and made some amendments. So they're suggesting these, but they have been approved by Affordable Housing Trust, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's what they are. They look pretty extensive. I haven't actually reviewed them myself, but it's called, they're, they're calling it inclusionary housing. So it's, it's a lot, I guess, but I wanted to put it out there in case it was something that you wanted to try to consider.
Well, if this ends up being, if, if they want to present it to the planning board, because the planning board has to review bylaws. Anyway, it's, I don't think these are bylaws specifically just to the trust. These are town bylaws.
Yeah.
So.
So this could be another meeting. Yeah. I just, I put it in folders. Yeah. I put it in because I didn't know.
I think, yeah, I think this is good. Who, who was speaking?
I'm sorry, Laurie, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is going to require some careful review, I think. And the other thing that we have discussed in the past is the, we're eliminating the term affordable as a legal term that ties with mass fair housing. So that's what our board had focused on previously. So I don't know how that integrates with what's being presented here either. So.
No, but I'd like to ask Adam that question. Do we have to worry about the term affordable in our bylaws?
So I don't know that you need to worry about it, but you do have to understand the meaning that it has, and you have to understand that meaning in the context of what it is that you're seeking to achieve through your bylaws. So I got this today as well. And so I took a, a very quick look at it. I, I didn't know the source of the redlined edits, but I, I do know now because Beth has said that it was the Affordable Housing Trust that made these recommendations. I didn't know that at the time that I had reviewed it. But I gave it, I gave it a review and obviously I'm aware of the existing bylaw language under section 145-48 that is currently entitled Affordable Housing Conditional Density Bonus. And it operates much like the title would suggest. It offers a density bonus, the ability to build more than you would be permitted to build as of right. If you dedicate a portion of your residential housing units to affordability, that you designate them affordable. Typically, that would mean that you're designating them affordable for a minimum term of 30 years. And typically it would mean that when you say affordable, you mean affordable at, at most to households that are earning 70 to 80% of area median income adjusted for household size. That's the state standard. That's the standard that would be used if you intend for these additional units that are created through a density bonus to count on the, on the town subsidized housing inventory. So that you can count them toward meeting your 10% standard, the goal that exists for all Massachusetts communities. So that's how it's structured today. When I look at the, the redline changes that are being proposed, it, it, it's really adding some specificity. It's, it's altering the language a bit. But I, but I had real concerns about whether it's still going to achieve what it is that the old bylaw was meant to achieve and what I think you probably still intend to achieve, but I don't know that for sure because I, this is the first discussion I've had on this topic. I've not discussed it with the trust and I've not discussed it with the planning board. But I have some questions about whether, let, let me just give you an example. If we go to the very first page, there's quite a bit of red in subparagraph A, which is entitled Purpose and Authority. And currently, what, what it says, if you go down five or six lines, it's stricken through and it's in red. Currently, it says that the planning board can issue a special permit to allow a density increase by relaxing requirements of the bylaw. And that a minimum of 30% of the units that would be developed on the site would be sold and maintained at affordable prices. If we look at what it's changed to say, we look at the new redline text, what it would say is that the objective is to make housing available to those earning a low to moderate income. And then it goes on to say that it will require a minimum of 10% of the units developed in the site be sold and maintained at affordable prices. But only if eight or more units are developed. And then it goes on to say that affordable pricing would be determined by the board in consultation with both the Housing Authority and the Trust. And that the rates would be revisited every five years. Well, that's going to run counter to the state standards, right? The, the state is not going to allow you to count a unit on the subsidized housing inventory if you're the ones deciding your planning board, your housing authority, your trust, what it means for a unit to be affordable. You have to comply with the state standards for affordability. If you intend to have these units count on the subsidized housing inventory. Additionally, as a practical matter, I think the language is too wishy-washy because it says the planning board determines the price in consultation with the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust. Well, how does that work in practice? Those are three separate bodies that need to convene a quorum and conduct open public meetings. Which, which decision controls? Is the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust providing an advisory recommendation to the planning board? Does, does their say have real meaning? Do they get to veto a price or, or a rent if they disagree with it? So I think that there's some issues there. Even staying within the same subsection A, we read the next sentence. It says lots which are non-conforming or do not meet traditional frontage or size requirements may be granted a special permit to build. And it goes on, let's say, so long as a minimum of one unit is made affordable. Well, to build why? Right? So you're not going to give them a special permit to build whatever they want, as long as they're, as long as they're non-conforming to start with. And they're, they're, they're providing one affordable unit. You could have non-conforming structures on large properties that are proposing to add 99 new units and you're going to get one affordable. And they're going to do so by way of a, of a planning board special permit. I, I don't think that that's the intention. So these are just a couple of examples of where I think the language needs to be tightened up a bit. But in order to do that, I need to better understand what the Affordable Housing Trust was, was attempting to achieve with these changes. And then what the planning board might be willing to recommend to town meeting. Because as you had said, Lori, the planning board is the body that conducts the public hearing and ultimately makes the recommendation at town meeting, on town meeting floor for adoption of, of a zoning bylaw amendment. So I think those discussions need to be had. Can they be had between now and, and mid-January? Maybe. You know, on, on the whole, there's a lot of red on this first page, but the entire bylaw is only like five or five and a half pages. And as we get beyond page one, you know, page two has hardly any red at all. So there's really no changes there. Page three has a few adjustments, but again, they're, they're somewhat repetitive of the two points that I just highlighted on page one. And then there's very little on the next page and very little on the next page and just a minor adjustment at the end. So the revisions are not comprehensive by any means. But I'm not sure that they really achieve what it is that the trust wants to achieve. And I'm also uncertain as to what it is that the trust wants to achieve.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm happy to have or invite the trust to come to our next meeting and we can specifically discuss this. What I think some of this may be, and when the, it was inserted about the boards working together to set the values. It's, when you use affordable housing and have to be counted towards affordable housing, you actually have to go through the process that the state wants you to go through, not what you locally want to go through. So that's never going to fly. That's not something we're going to be able to do. And I think that the biggest hurdle that any owner has had about even a developer, or when we went through the accessory apartment thing, was going through the process of selecting the person who was going to get the affordable property. And that in itself is $15 to $30,000. And you have to use a state agency, and this is just for one. You have to use a state agency that you hire to do this process. And no, or your unit's not going to count by, to the state standards. So I think that's, that's the bigger issue. And how do we fight that issue? And make the state understand that by you doing this doesn't make the properties any more affordable. Because you can't get people who want to do it. So I think because the trust, and Adam, you're going to know this because you were part of the formation of the trust was so that the house, the trust could get funds and operate was so that the house, the trust could get funds and operate in a manner of developing some affordable housing. So maybe we've done that and maybe that will work as far as identifying properties. But that's not going to work as far as the town owning these properties and managing them. Because they're still going to have to follow the formula of the state. So maybe they realize this and, and maybe they're not thinking along those lines. But I think that's our biggest hurdle, not so much the bylaws. There was one sentence there that I really liked, that I wish we would put in every one of our
I'm sorry, too.
And that is, you know, being able to waive the lot size, the frontage. I mean, if, a- and this was one of the things that I really was hoping to accomplish tonight is to work with language that allows an owner of a property that is non-conforming to build something that would be acceptable on a lot that does not meet all those requirements, whether it be side setback, front setback, rear, uh, lot size. But as long as they have, um, a lot that will accommodate the septic that's approved by the Board of Health is not, um, harmful to our water supply thereby conservation of would approve this lot. And it has or doesn't have town water, depends if it does, you know, even better. But if it doesn't and it's still all conforms, that we, the planning board, be able to issue, issue a special permit.
Well, I think recently, and I came across this, um, the state has already got some legislation in the works for non-conforming lot, billable lots. And, uh, I can pull up what I discovered, but I don't have it accessible right now. So that is also something that is going on currently on the state level to, uh, more, you know, to allow towns or to encourage towns to, uh, allow more housing on lots that are not conventionally conforming.
Okay.
I don't see specifics of it yet, all right? Um, but so I think that I don't have a problem with, um. The other part that I do like and what we saw when Beth presented this on the screen is the first sentence in this affordable statement about people vital to our community. Right now, I think we're experiencing affordable housing that's based on, uh, housing values that are not representative of what Townsend's values are. But are, so it says here, people making a low to moderate income who are vital part of the Townsend community. So yes, we want affordable housing for our people. Not just to have it affordable comparable to somebody in Quincy who finds that our prices are really desirable and actually end up coming into our community when the real need is for our own community.
Okay, um, Robert, thank you. I don't know how, um, how we as a planning board can actually make any changes regarding what people can afford and what they can't afford. That is the development. That is the inflation rate. That is many other things that are beyond our control. But I appreciate your comments in reference to that.
Laura, we're the planning board. We're trying to plan what's best for our community. And, um, so I do think we have some input into this.
Well, we may have input, but how are we going to change that, Robert? We are not in control of those things.
Adam, you have any suggestions?
Uh, in, you know, um, y- yes and no. So, um, I, I don't disagree with the issues you're raising because I've heard them raised by other planning board members, other select board members, other town meeting attendees um, in discussing inclusionary zoning and discussing, uh, ADUs and discussing density bonuses. Uh, informing Affordable Housing Trusts and attempting to create affordable housing for those often in their communities that want to downsize, want to age in place, uh, but want to remain in the community where they, where they grew up, where they raised their families, and maybe they can't afford any longer. Um, the challenge is that that is directly at odds with the policies that have been promulgated at the state level and at the federal level that are meant to prevent discrimination. And so one way the communities used to do this, and they didn't do it by way of bylaw, but they did it in permits and approvals they issued, like for example, chapter forty B comprehensive permits. We all know what forty B is. I know it doesn't come before the planning board, but zoning boards review chapter forty B applications for comprehensive permit, permits. And those are, um, comprehensive permits are probably the number one tool in Massachusetts used for the creation of affordable housing. Well, it used to be, even in my early years of practice twenty years ago, that you could incorporate as a condition of approval as a zoning board in the town of Townsend. You can incorporate a provision that allowed for and required a local preference for up to seventy percent of the units that would be designated affordable would be entitled to a local preference, that they would be reserved effectively for those in your community that want to remain in your community. Well, guess what? The state has worked over the past fifteen to twenty years to work that out of comprehensive permits. And in fact, they have adopted stringent standards that say the, exactly the opposite of what you just described, Rob, which is if you now have a forty B development that requires a local preference, you have to prove to the state before the state will permit you to exercise that local preference that exercising it will not have a disparate impact on protected classes. And you say, okay, well, what does that mean? That's a bunch of fancy terminology. What does it mean to have a disparate impact on protected classes? Well, you have to show that the demographics of the town of Townsend are the equivalent of the demographics of the metropolitan statistical area in which you're located, which means you include Pittsburgh and you include Leominster. And so when you match their demographics, they don't match your demographics. And, and so the, the consequence is going to be that you're going to have to price these units, you're going to have to market these units to anybody who can qualify. And if those individuals happen to be residents of Pittsburgh that want to relocate to the town of Townsend or Leominster or any of your surrounding communities, you have, you have no ability to keep them out without engaging in discrimination and violating not only state law but federal law. So that's been a real challenge and that's just addressing the, that's just addressing the lottery component, that the, the actual marketing lottery of these units. That's not even speaking to this concept of affordability and how this, the purchase price gets, gets calculated, which is again, based upon the metropolitan statistical area of which you're a part and not based upon what individuals and households in the town of Townsend are earning. And it, is it unfair to those in Townsend that want to remain in Townsend and are looking for housing, they can't find it, that are being pushed out by individuals from other communities that want to relocate into Townsend? Absolutely, it's unfair. But it's all, it also happens to be what the law requires. So the only thing I can offer by way of a solution, and it's not really a solution, but it's, it's what I've seen done in other communities. And, you know, we, we're talking about this, this, this bylaw, this Affordable Housing Conditional Density Bonus is what it was called before. Now you're proposing to, 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 to call it the Inclusionary Housing Requirements for Developments. In its essence, this bylaw is an inclusionary zoning bylaw. Um, not rocket science. They've been adopted in dozens and dozens of communities across Massachusetts. The concept of inclusionary zoning is that you require for developments of a certain size, there's typically a threshold, usually it's four units, sometimes it's eight units. But you require for any development that exceeds a certain size, it can be multifamily, it can be single-family subdivisions. You require the provision of an affordability component, usually it's ten percent, although I've seen it as high as twenty-five percent. Uh, an affordability component, or what is done in some communities is to offer the opportunity to a developer to make a payment in lieu of providing an affordable unit. And you might say, well, what is that? That's just a, that's just an exaction. That's just requiring a developer to write a check to the town instead of having to provide affordable housing. Well, that's true. But this goes to the point that Lori made before. The problem with inclusionary zoning bylaws is that it is cost prohibitive in many instances for developers of smaller projects. And so to Lori's point, the cost of a marketing and lottery plan and, and then implementing that plan can be anywhere from fifteen to forty thousand dollars. And unfortunately, there's an economy of scale. So whether you have one affordable unit or you have twenty-one affordable units, or you have a hundred and one affordable units, the cost doesn't rise. It's not, it's not twenty times the cost of one unit. It's maybe, maybe for the twenty affordable units, maybe the cost of that marketing and lottery is thirty thousand dollars as opposed to twenty-five thousand if it were just one unit. It, it is exponentially and, and the reason, the reason for that is there's an economy of scale. You've got to prepare the marketing and lottery plan. You've got to conduct the lottery, whether it's one unit or twenty units. And so it, it favors the developer of larger, developers of larger projects. So if you've got hundred unit projects that are propping up in your community here, there and everywhere, like Brookline or Worcester, maybe it's a non-issue because you've got, you've got those larger projects and those developers are creating affordable housing units. They're building a hundred units and they're designating twenty, twenty-five percent of those units as affordable units. But when you've got smaller projects like you might have in Townsend and you've got these developers of four-unit projects or eight-unit projects or twelve-unit projects, and they've got to provide ten percent or twenty percent of those units as affordable, it's a real hit to them to have to incur the cost, the marketing, the lottery, the soft costs associated with those affordable units. And so by offering a payment in lieu, they can choose instead to write a check to the town. And after that happens once or twice or three times or ten times, those monies go into the Affordable Housing Trust and can be utilized by the trust to develop affordable housing projects or to preserve the affordability of affordable units that were going to drop off the inventory, which we've seen done in many communities. So that's another way to create or preserve affordable housing. Um, but also to recognize kind of the, 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 the ebb and flow of how it works with these developments as regards an inclusionary zoning bylaw. So there are some ways to structure these bylaws that could work better for your town.
Thank you, Ed.
Unfortunately, that's the reality. Questions from anybody else regarding that? Beth, what, what is it? Uh, can you remind me, please, what else we are addressing?
Oh, um, I did gather a few things and put them in your meeting packet that they're not, you know, they were just random things that, that kind of came to mind. One of them is, um, the previous land use coordinator did start going through the zoning bylaw and she had made some comments. Um, noticed some omissions and some additions. So I put that in the packet that you could go through at your leisure. They're more, again, um, clerical editorial, uh, edits. Some of them are you know, larger, you know, regarding like the floodplain bylaw, uh, that will have to be amended, which would be a spring town meeting thing. However, I put it in the packet so you could go through that. And if something speaks to you that, you know, we could do at, you know, the, the fall town meeting, then, you know, that can be discussed on the ninth.
Has Adam seen those yet?
No, nobody has. They, I just pulled them out of a file that she had left when she left her office, uh, here in Townsend. So I had that and I figured I'd throw it in for, you know, for you to review. And then I did pop in the twenty-twenty-two warrant article on, um, the age-restricted development, uh, that was never brought to town meeting. So I thought if you wanted to review that, I know that, um, you know, currently you have a project under review, but there was a lot of discussion, um, about amendment to that. So I put what was proposed back in twenty-twenty-two, went to public hearing and eventually was, um, not brought forward to town meeting. And I think most of it, I think it was, you had suggested the acreage, uh, be reduced from two to one acres for, um, the criteria applicability. And, um, that was a point of worry, if I recall. I mean, Lance, I think you were at the public hearing, correct? Do you recall the, uh, concerns?
Yes.
Do you remember what they were? Because
No.
Okay, okay. Because we're, we, we do keep thinking about, maybe it's me that just keeps thinking about, but, um, having smaller lots, again, that will be overseen by the Board of Health Conservation and the Water Department and the Highway and all those other things. And if the lot may not be conforming to the zoning that it's in, if it meets all that criteria, we should be able to grant a, a permit on that. And Adam, is there any way you can help us accomplish that?
With respect specifically to the Age Restrictive Development bylaw?
No.
Well, I would like to see it in general. My, my thinking is in general. Can it only be the age-restricted? And by the way, just let me give, let me add a point in here before I forget again. Two of the three units are sold and occupied on Fitchburg Road. One ninety-four Fitchburg Road, the three unit, um, age-restricted that we did approve and was built. And two are now occupied, just this month. The, they closed the beginning of this month, both of those units at four seventy-nine-nine. And the center unit is on at four sixty-nine. So that's a report on that. But, um, Adam, what do you think?
Yeah, so, so, so let me, let me offer a couple of things. So first of all, I was also in attendance at the public hearing relating to the Age Restrictive Development bylaw, these potential changes, which I, uh, had a hand in reviewing and, and assisting with at the time. Um, in fact, I think that I was told what, what it was that needed to change and I might have even drafted the language. Um, and I think it says that in green up top and, and by, and by town council. So my recollection of what occurred, and I'd have to go back and watch it, um, to know for certain, but I think that there was just a a, a lack of consensus, um, between board members and a few, a couple of members of the public who attended. I think that, um, net now Select Woman Kel was also in attendance at that meeting as well. Um, so she may have a better recollection than I do. Um, but there was just a lack of consensus concerning whether it was appropriate to reduce the acreage from two acres to one acre. I remember some concerns being raised about do we know how many properties in the town of Townsend would now be subject potentially to use of this bylaw and what that could mean for the town and potential use of the bylaw and development or overdevelopment. Um, and then I think there was also a concern as we go to, um, page two, um, that there was this, um, sort of generic statement. Um, the planning board may in its reasonable discretion, I'm looking at number eight in bold, and it has some green text at the end of it. The planning board may in its reasonable discretion reduce, alter or waive any or all of the foregoing basic requirements upon demonstration uh, by an applicant of just cause for the reduction, alteration or waiver. Uh, that was the original language that I had proposed. It's a, it's pretty similar to what you see at the top of that same page that's stricken through, a few items above, number five. Um, nothing in this section shall preclude the planning board from reducing or waiving minimum setback requirements. Um, or space, uh, between internal lots. The idea was take it out of five and put it at the end and make it applicable to any of the basic requirements up above. Um, and if I recall, the language in green, um, just further clarifies that there needs to be a finding that a reduction, alteration or waiver would advance the purpose of the bylaw and further the public interest. And I, again, I think there was a concern that that, and this is going to dovetail nicely into me answering your, your, your other question, Lori. Um, oh, there's, look at this, there's even a comment here from a few years ago.
Yep.
Now I'm reading it, so.
Okay.
This is, this just reminded the board that it needed to apply the special permit standard. So, um, so, so I think that there was a concern that it vested the board with too much authority. And so this goes to your question, Lori, about is there a way generically in the bylaw to allow for the waiver of provisions, frontage requirements, setback requirements, minimum lot acreage requirements? Um, the answer is yes. You have, you have the legal authority to adopt waiver provisions as part of your zoning bylaws. And in fact, I do it often when I'm crafting self-contained bylaws, um, to be added to the zoning bylaw. For example, um, I just got passed in one of my other communities a chapter forty R smart growth overlay district bylaw. And I always incorporate a waiver provision that allows for the waiver of the, the, the dimensional or density standards within the bylaw if it's determined to be consistent with the objectives of the bylaw. Um, I don't see it done very often on a, on a zoning bylaw wide scale. Because effectively then what you're doing is you're creating a waiver process that takes the place of the statutory variance process. Typically, if you want to alter the dimensional requirements, the density standards, you need to go to the zoning board of appeals and get a variance and you meet, have to meet a very strict and you meet, have to meet a very strict statutory standard. Some communities do allow it on a broader basis. Again, I'll give you an example. I represent the town of Marblehead. Marblehead, for as long as I can remember, for as long as I've been doing work there, and I've been doing work there since the late 2000s, they've always had what they call a special permit for use and dimension. And it essentially allows an applicant, applicant to come forward and seek a special permit to vary the dimensions, or the density, or even the use of a property in a manner that would otherwise be prohibited by the bylaw. It effectively eliminates the need for a variance in the town of Marblehead. Now, it's very rare, and the challenge will be getting that through town meeting, because you're going to have some naysayers that say, we're putting all of our trust in our planning board and the few planning board members to exercise their broad discretion to decide when to say that all of these standards we've gone, you know, through, through, through a significant effort to adopt and that we call our zoning bylaw can simply be ignored. That's what, that's what the naysayers are going to say. And you're going to have to, you're going to have to convince them that this is, number one, that it's safe to put that trust in the hands of the planning board. And number two, that it actually is going to help the planning board achieve a broader, a grander vision for the town. To allow for underutilized sites to be redeveloped in a way that the bylaw wouldn't allow them to be redeveloped now. To allow for the creation of housing opportunities in locations where they couldn't be created now. Certainly, the environment is, is sort of ripe for that kind of a thing. I mean, as, as Rob had alluded to before, there's a, there's a push at the state level to, through the Affordable Homes Act and otherwise, to create opportunities, at least in the residential context, for further development to occur, infill development to occur. Part of the Affordable Homes Act, aside from the ADUs, was actually to create a new grandfathering clause that allows for lots in common ownership that would have merged by operation of law. If they have 7,500 square feet and 75 feet of frontage, they can actually effectively be demerged and can be used for starter homes, for homes of not more than 1,750 square feet. So there is a push at the state level for this sort of stuff to happen. And giving yourselves the ability through a special permit process to grant these kinds of waivers is not necessarily a bad idea, but my experience is that it does take some convincing, convincing at the constituent level because of that discretion.
Okay, so I can say, but my thoughts are not to give grandiose power to the planning board. My thoughts are to make opportunities that have checks and balances. So in other words, planning board is not making the final determination without hearing from the building inspector, without hearing from the Board of Health, without hearing from Conservation. I mean, we do that anyway in, in everything that we hear for a public hearing, but this would be written into the bylaw so that they understand it is not just the planning board that makes this decision. It has to follow safety measures for the town. What's good for our environment, what's good for the town should be the ultimate reason for any decision. How do we relay that message to them? It's not about power.
Right, and, and, and I, and I know, I know it's not, because I know your board and I know you, and I know that it's not about that. I'm just telling you what the naysayers are going to say, because I've heard it over and over again in all sorts of communities across the state. How do you address it? Well, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to do for a couple of reasons. Number one is you, you just talked about not making the decision in a vacuum. You're, you're soliciting input from your building inspector, and from your Board of Health, and from your zoning board, and from staff. The, the problem is, even if you write that into your bylaw, generally speaking, those are advisory opinions that don't bind the planning board. So maybe the, may, may, it may even be that your constituents, that the, the town meeting goers have full trust and, and, and complete belief in you as members of the planning board, but it, it's, it's bigger than that. It's about, okay, are they going to have trust for the planning board members that might be sitting in your seats in five years, or 10 years, or 20 years, right? So it's not even personal necessarily to all of you.
Right.
It's just, okay, we're, we're relinquishing this authority to the planning board. And yes, they have to, they have to vet their decisions with zoning and building inspector, and, but they're not bound, everybody could say no, and they could still choose to do what they choose to do. You could work in binding authority. There are, there are systems of checks and balances that I've seen at work. It typically is not three, or four, or five different boards, but you, I've seen often, for example, with a, a zoning board that might have the authority to issue a density bonus, that it might say in the bylaw that the zoning board can approve a density bonus through a, a special permit process only upon the recommendation of the planning board. So essentially, it requires the planning board first to support it, and then to recommend it to the zoning board that would be the permit granting authority. And you could reverse that, or you could name different entities. So it, it takes that advisory role and converts it into a, a, a mandatory referral role. So that's one way to address the circumstance. But I will still tell you that the risk is, and this is what you will hear from residents, and I'm not saying that, that, that this risk ought to rule the day, or that I believe that there's, there's, there's merit to it, but I'm just telling you what you're going to hear. You're going to hear residents say that the, the risk in creating a special permit process is that developers will seek to avail themselves of that process. Even if you exercise your discretion and you say with respect to a project that you feel is absolutely wrong for the community, you say no, and you deny the special permit, there are still appellate rights that accrue to that applicant. So that applicant can then appeal that determination, that denial of the special permit to court. And although your decision is entitled to deference, it's still a de novo review, and now a judge gets a bite at the apple. And if it's determined that you didn't follow the strict standards that are contained within your bylaw for the issuance or denial of a special permit, if it's simply that you had this subjective feeling that it wasn't right for the town, but you couldn't put your finger on what it was that made it not right. You couldn't say it's going to create traffic congestion, and therefore it's going to bring the nearby intersections to a level of service D. Or it's going to create problems with respect to inconsistency with neighborhood character. It's a commercial use in the vicinity of only, only residential uses. You can't point to any of those things, it's just that you don't like it, it doesn't fit. That can be problematic, and that can result in your decision being overturned, and now you get the development you didn't want, because you created a process whereby that could become possible. Do I think that there's a real risk of that? How, how often does it happen? It doesn't happen often, and it doesn't happen often in communities like Townsend, because the value of these projects have to justify what could be eight years of litigation. You see that in some other communities, right? I mean, you see it in communities like Brookline. You know, a vacant lot in Brookline is worth a whole lot more than a vacant lot in Townsend. It just is what it is. And so the, the potential to build 100 units in Brookline, there's a lot of money in a 100 unit project in Brookline. You can litigate for eight years, even if you're spending 100 grand a year on your council, and you're still going to make a massive profit off of that development. That's not going to work the same way outside the 495 belt, or even outside the 128 belt in most instances. So, so I don't think it's a significant risk in a community like Townsend, but you just have to be prepared to, to, to create, to try and craft a bylaw that provides those checks and balances, and then explain how that works, both at your public hearing and then eventually at town meeting.
Okay, so to the board, do we want to do something like that? Looking
Lori.
Yes, Andrew.
I like your train of thought. I, I think it's worth maybe having a specific meeting where we maybe explore it in more detail. Maybe we can limit that process to single family, or, you know, limit it so it's not big developments or something to that effect. I'm not sure what that would look like. Am I losing you guys?
Understood.
Those are my thoughts. I'm going to have a hard stop here and probably
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Carol?
I agree with you, Lori, but I, I think I like Andrew's idea of limiting it to single family homes.
Okay, well, that, I mean, it deserves discussion, I think, if we can work on it. Or, well, it, it, maybe not even single family, but if you have, like, we are just looking at on, am I, I don't know if I'm allowed to, well, we're in a meeting, but where the other was a public hearing. I shouldn't mention any properties, right?
No, not if, not if it's subject of an existing application or something.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, so let's just say there's a, a, a property that is undersized slightly for multiple units. And it makes sense on, for all the reasons that I've stated before, and to get advice from all those boards, that that take place. It's not an impact on our schools. It's not, you know, for, for several reasons, it does make sense for our town. I would hate to just restrict it to the single family. I'm not looking for 400 or 180 units type of, when I say I, I mean, like, we, you know, looking for a big development that may end up overtaxing our schools, which are already overtaxed to the hilt. So again, it's, it's about thinking that it makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Lance?
Yes, I agree with Andrew's approach.
Just the single family?
To start with.
Okay, Adam, is this, Beth, might this be something that we can bring back to that night of, well, first of all, our next meeting? And it, it's not a totally new bylaw that needs to be written. Can we kind of rehash this one that never got to the annual meeting that we have discussed before? And get that kind of, uh, modernized, let's say, or brought up to date?
Yep.
To what we're doing now, and try to put that forward again. It seems an appropriate time where the state wants us to, you know, have more housing. So again, it wouldn't be in, I, I can't even imagine thinking about the properties in town at this current time, unless farms were going to convert into housing. And I don't see, I don't really see that happening here, that we would have that much space where this would happen. It's going to be like, maybe one here, maybe one there, you know, throughout the town. It's not going to be anything, and that's just from my own knowledge. See, there could be more, but I think we're stagnant. We've been stagnant for a long time, and that's why we don't have an increase in our tax base. So.
So I would, can I ask a question? I think during the original codification at town meeting for the spy law, we're going back a few years. I was, I was told by a ZBA member that they actually proposed an amendment to drop the acreage from two to one, and that town council told them for some reason that wasn't doable with the AG. Do you have any recollection of that, Adam? I mean, we're going back quite a few years, I realize, but is there any reason why that would not be approved by the AG? If it were to be reduced from two acres down to one for applicability for the, for the lot size?
Guys, I'm going to jump on. I don't, I don't think so.
No? Okay, great, great.
No, I mean, it, it could have been an issue if it was raised at town meeting. Was, was it raised at a town meeting that I attended?
Yeah, I believe it was you, yeah. It was, it was originally, now, this is just something that someone brought up recently, so I don't know the facts on it.
No, I mean, so, so, and I honestly, I don't, it would have been, it would have been years ago, and I unfortunately attend far too many town meetings that they tend to blend together after three or four, five years. But, but having said that, I mean, what I can guess I might have said would be, i- i- if, if there, if the proposal was to reduce the acreage from two to one, and therefore that opened the door to this, this bylaw potentially applying to many, many more properties in the community.
Yep.
It might have been a scope issue, right? Because whenever there's a floor amendment proposed, the question becomes, is it within the scope of what the public has received notice of?
Exactly.
And would have, would have attended town meeting to either support or object to. And so that, that could have been a potential issue of scope. It's a close call there, but
Yeah, that, that's
It doesn't cause me to raise an eyebrow from a scope perspective, but presuming it's, it's advertised correctly moving forward, I don't see any issue why the, any reason or any issue with why the acreage couldn't be reduced from two down to one.
Excellent, thank you. That's great, that makes total sense, now that you met, yeah, okay.
And, and so I, I want to be clear, because we're talking about a couple of different things. Our conversation morphed a bit, right? So we're talking about this, this Age Restricted Development Bylaw, and the work is pretty much done for us to bring this back to a public hearing, if you want, on January 13th, because I reviewed this a couple of years ago, three years ago, and two and a half years ago, and made adjustments to it, and it's ready to go. And it went to a public hearing previously, it just didn't proceed beyond the public hearing. So we could convene another public hearing, and, and it, it could go to town meeting if the board so chooses. That's a separate conversation from, do you want to do other things to the bylaw that could incentivize the development of these underutilized properties for single families, or two families, or however far you want to go? And that could be something comprehensive, that could be a self-contained bylaw that, you know, is entitled, you know, waivers or special permits for undersized residential lots. So you, you could create a self, or you could do it potentially even more simply by looking at something, for example, like your existing grandfathering provisions. And really, what you need to know is, what is the starting point, right? So what I don't do in my capacity as your town council is I'm not a town planner, so I don't perform the functions that MRPC does, or that your town planner might perform, in going through your assessor's maps and identifying every vacant property in Townsend that has adequate frontage that could potentially be developed with a, with a project of a certain size. And then, and then looking at the, the attributes of those sites and saying, okay, what do we have? Are these sites that used to be conforming, but they're not anymore because we have upzoned the town? Are these sites that were never conforming, that would have needed relief 50 years ago, the same way they need relief today? Because once you have those questions answered, there may be simpler things you can do. If you determine that a lot of these sites that are no longer available for single family homes, let's say, would have been available 50 years ago, but they're just not anymore because you adopted zoning in the 70s, and you've revised that zoning a half dozen times, and it's now far more stringent than it used to be, well, then the solution could be something as simple as going into your, your non-conformity provisions in your bylaw, your grandfathering provisions, and adopting a more favorable grandfathering provisions than, provision than this, than the baseline that the state creates. And many communities have done that. I did work for years in the town of Harwich on Cape Cod, and they had a more favorable zoning grandfathering provision in their zoning bylaw that allowed for, for lots that were undersized, even though they were held in common ownership, to be developed, you know, years and years later, if they met the requirements that existed at the time that the lots were created. So there may be things that you can do to sort of resurrect development opportunity on lots, but you, you, you need to sort of go through lot by lot and see what's available in the town, because you're, even if you weren't to do that in advance, you're going to get that question to town meeting. Somebody's going to stand up and say, how many lots could this possibly apply to? What are we doing to our town? You need to have the question, so one, the answer to the question, why not have it before you, you get started on the zoning adjustment, so that we know how to craft a bylaw that is protective of enough, conservative enough, that we can answer that question on town meeting floor and still get a passing vote.
Okay, that, that kind of rings a bell with me. So if you could check with Vicky in the assessor's office, and also MRPC, maybe Karen or Glenn, to see if something has been done like that for Townsend. Okay? Because that's a good point, Adam, very good point.
So you specifically, you want to know whether pre-existing non-conforming lots have been tabulated?
Yeah.
Vacant? Vacant, you said?
Vacant.
Oh, unbuilt. Yeah, I would imagine that would be, yeah, okay.
That's easier than everything.
Okay.
Okay, just the vacant land.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Adam.
Sure.
Okay, well, so, yes, we'll look at that for the generalized one, and move forward with the age restricted.
Okay.
For, for this, for our next meeting, and hopefully we have whatever we need. Was there anything else you wanted us to do, Beth? And then I was going to bring up just the information on the Housing Trust and what's going on with all the Facebook stuff.
Oh, no, but the only other thing is I wondered if you wanted to give that vision of, you called it a generalized bylaw. Did you want to give that a name that I can grab? Like, I, I don't know where you're going with that, so call it, call it something.
Well, Adam, I think you had, I, I think I liked what you said about the, a separate bylaw covering undeveloped our land, if you will, or
Unbuildable.
What was the term, what was the term that you?
I, I think I said something like special permits for single family residences on undersized lots, something like that.
Okay, something that was not in today's zoning. And I forgot the term that you used.
Non-conforming?
Not pre-conforming. Well, they're not, not conforming to today.
Pre-existing non-conforming. That's what we use.
Yeah, I, I, I think we want to, I think we want to avoid that. I mean, that, that terminology, pre-existing non-conforming has a legal meaning and we're not talking about that. We're talking about lots that are, that are undersized, it simply don't comply. They may have never complied, but they're undersized. We can call them non-compliant as a non, as opposed to non-conforming. Non-compliant lots, but we, we have to have a sense as to how many of those lots exist in the community.
What's the compliance criteria? The zoning map? I mean, the zoning.
Well, current.
Zoning by law.
Current.
Okay.
And I, I'm going to have a hard stop here coming up.
Okay, non-compliant to the zoning bylaw. Table of, uh, yeah, okay. Table.
Lance, did you have comments that you would like to make?
Uh, I don't right now.
Okay. Carol, do you have any other comment?
No, I don't have any more comments right now.
And Andrew had to leave. Um, Robert, do you have any other comments?
Other than I think it's worth pursuing, some of these substandard lots could be used. It also goes in harmony with some of the other subjects we talked about. I says, is the town going to address, you know, this mini home kind of scenario? Uh, are we going to make any provisions for that in their community or not? You know, the tiny homes situation. So it, to me, they're kind of interrelated, even though they may want to allow them in specific areas and not throughout the town. So I think the two subjects should be discussed at the same time. So that we can, one, I mean, I think this board is pretty aggressive trying to find additional units for the town. Different ways that we can accommodate that. Discussing reducing the size of a lot is very important. And then the trying to think a little more progressively with this mini home thing that's going on. Because the mini home thing is directly related to affordable housing that is not divined legally. You know, in other words, housing, reducing housing costs because of the size of the house or whatever. So all of those things I, we've discussed in the past.
Yes, we have.
I don't know if we have adequate time to, to address it before we have a fall town meeting. I don't think it's so much a product of how many lots may be available. I think it's more of a product of where these things could occur.
Okay, well, once we identify those vacant lots, we'll be able to kind of know what might be good and what might not.
Those are my thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Adam, very much appreciate your time.
Really? Sure.
Do you have any last words for us this evening?
I don't.
So, yeah, so will you? Want to, I don't know, would you want to be with us on the ninth?
Um, so let me see if I can be. My recollection is, well, I think I had told you that I couldn't because that's also, that isn't that the same night that your public hearing continued from the last meeting? I think I had told, I think I had told you that night I was unavailable. And my calendar still shows that I am, but I think what I've got on my calendar might be continuing now. So I'll, I'll, I'll put you on and presuming that I can make it, I will be in attendance. Because I would need to be in attendance for that continued special permit anyway.
Okay, so you and Beth will be in touch about that. Okay.
Right. And I, I think, I think what, what is really sort of most important is if you're working with existing bylaw or bylaw changes, like the age restricted development bylaw, we already have the modifications or the forthcoming ADU adjustments that, that MRPC is proposing. Just to get those to me as early as possible, wh- while the, while the warrant is still open, but ideally before, before it closes and has been finalized. And obviously, Laura, you will know when it's been finalized because the select board will be finalizing it. But, but I, I'd like to know that so that if I have adjustments that I need to propose, legal adjustments, they can be made because you're, you're holding, because the timeframe is so condensed here, you're holding your planning board public hearing less than two weeks prior to town meeting. So any adjustments that occur at that, at that, at that planning board public hearing are going to be, are going to have to then be floor amendments because the bylaw is going to already have been published as part of the warrant. So that just makes it a little bit tricky. If the changes are substantial, you may not even be able to vote on it at town meetings. So you, you just, it, it's tricky when the planning board public hearing is being held so close to town meeting. There's no ability for planning board feedback to modify what gets placed into the warrant and post it because the warrant's posted prior to the public hearing.
Okay, well.
Well, if I, if I may, we did have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-third. So if you want to reconsider. I know that you had talked about possibly moving that chair different to another date. So it's possible that we could move that to the thirtieth of December, the following Monday, and move the public hearing up to the thirtieth or even, you know, move, move it to January sixth. There, you know, there's, there's flexibility in your schedule for that.
Okay. We'll talk about that before the next meeting. We'll talk about the schedule. Okay, Beth?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time tonight. And Adam, you too. And so have a great week. And we'll see you. Not two weeks, right? Two weeks to our meeting. Okay. All right, so we'll be getting some stuff to review and we can get comments back to Beth.
Great.
Okay? Thank you all very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this work session meeting at five forty-nine PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting at five forty-nine PM.
Is there a second? Okay, no discussions necessary. So we are virtual. I'll take a roll call vote.
Karen, yes.
Robert, yes.
Laura Schiffin, yes. Thank you all very much. And thank you, Jim. We are adjourned.